Pledge of Allegiance, if you don't have a, I don't have a, a flag, so just picture one in your mind. And we'll go ahead and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, we have. I will go over our mission statement. For, like, like we do at every, beginning of every board meeting. Lakeland Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every stu- student is growing academically, socially, social emotionally and behaviorally, all day, in all environments. Uh, with that, I would ask for any patron input. And I know that Chrissy's received some emails. And if it's okay with the board members, I would ask that Chrissy just read the emails for us. So that we can get the patron input. Uh, would that be okay with, uh, with all of the board members?
Yes. Yes.
How about you, Ramona, you good?
Okay, I have put them all in one document and I'll just read them all in a row, who they're from and. Does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay, so first comment is from Tracy Dickinson, senior parent, oh, actually, I'm over the top, I apologize. First comment is from Stephanie West, it says, good afternoon, my daughter is a senior at Timberlake and I wanted to ask a question. High schools have pretty large football fields, is that an option to hold graduation? To me, people can spread out on both sides of the field. The kids can spread out on the football field while shopping in town. At any point these days, you are way less than six feet away from people. Just my two cents. Signed, Stephanie West. Uh, we have Phil Thompson. And he says, the current district level management and board have been non-responsive to the graduation issues that are boiling up. In light of this fact, one should ask the following questions. Why is the district superintendent throwing her administrators under the bus publicly? The high school principal puts out a parent poll the same day she is in the paper telling the public how graduation will take place. Why does district hide behind the governor and the state board of education? Why should one support any levy put forth by such leadership? How can they be credible? No more levies until this is fixed. Time to listen to the adults in the room, the parents. This district is quickly losing the public trust. Signed, Phil Thompson, Rutherford, Idaho. And we have comment from Tracy Dickinson. She says, hi Chrissy, I'm emailing asking for the board to consider letting our Lakeland graduates have a semi-normal graduation. Lakeland and Timberlake both being able to sit together socially distant and walk together. Best case would be at our own football fields, but at the fairgrounds if that would not work. Feel free to contact me if you need further information. Thank you, Tracy Dickinson, senior parent, Timberlake High School. Next one from Robin Morland. My name is Robin Morland. Thank you for taking the time to hear my input. My daughter Chloe is a senior and will be graduating this year. She is one of the top students at Lakeland. And has greatly valued her experiences at Lakeland High School. As a registered nurse, I understand the stay-at-home order. I have greatly appreciated those who have abided by it during this time, so the healthcare system would not be overwhelmed. But as time has gone on, we have all seen the need to return to normalcy. Stores, restaurants, beaches, casinos, crowded gyms have opened. Social distancing is sometimes enforced. All of these activities could have been waited for. But our high school seniors only get to graduate once. From what I have seen, they have been very gracious in staying home to protect the vulnerable without too much complaint. Their time as youth was stripped from them to protect the rest of us. Shouldn't we now honor them with at least being able to sit together with guidelines in place? We as parents can sit in our cars, but why can't less than 200 students sit together one last time? My daughter is going on to attend a four-year university and will have another graduation at some point. But many of our students will go into the military or not ev- or not ever have another graduation. I am sure parents would be willing to sign waivers if needed. I greatly appreciate your time, as I know you face tough decisions. If the rest of the community, excuse me, was still isolating, it would make more sense. But they are not. I think this experience is extremely valuable to our young people and we should honor them. Robin Morland. Okay, next one is from Michelle Woodward. Hello, I'm one of many Lakeland parents that have serious concerns about decisions being made within our district. After the meeting held for parents in response to graduation at Lakeland. I spent yesterday talking to Jill Ainsworth with Panhandle Health, Hayden, at Hayden, at the governor's office. Billy with Idaho Health, as well as spoke to Mike Kekler, Chief Communications Officer with Idaho Department of Education. All of them informed me that the si- the decision to allow a high school graduation, in a traditional sense, falls solely on the individual school districts. They said that how the ceremony is held is under the sole discretion of the individual districts. While they recommend following little suggestions, they all reported that there is no one that will be enforcing anything should districts choose to hold a graduation. In addition, Mike Kekler even mentioned that there are many districts in Idaho that will hold normal celebrations. Even with Governor Little's recommendations. Our district needs to support our students and have a real graduation. If Silverwood can have thousands of guests, Triple Play can allow 250 guests. And countless other businesses like Lowe's and Home Depot can have multiple people in stores and confined spaces. Our students should be allowed to have a somewhat normal graduation. I have no problem with setting chairs at the six-foot spacing and wearing masks if the individuals choose. But these kids need their graduation. Lakeland needs to take a stand and show our students they are supported during this time. They have already been denied a lot for their senior year. Please do not make them lose their graduation too. Please support our students. Signed, Michelle W- Woodward. Okay, last one from Taryn Thompson. Good morning, senior parents have been actively reaching out to the governor's office, lieutenant governor's office, Idaho Department of Health. Panhandle Health District and State Board of Education. We keep getting the same response. The school board and school district have ultimate authority over our high school graduation ceremony. If we have our graduates sitting outdoors socially distanced during the drive-in ceremony at the fairgrounds, nobody is going to be arrested or cited. And no action will be taken. It is ridiculous that we can have all of our seniors indoors at Triple Play for an all-night party, but we can't have them sit together outdoors in spaced apart. I understand that the school district and school board didn't come up with these arbitrary rules that defy common sense. But you have it within your power to do what is right for our seniors and our community. Many other districts are having traditional graduations or ceremonies that don't 100% align with the governor's orders. Those districts are exercising common sense and recognition that many areas of our state have few to no cases of coronavirus. They are supporting their seniors by giving them the best graduation possible under the circumstances. All we are asking is that our seniors be allowed to sit together, even if they have to be at least si- even if they have to be six feet apart. Give them that much. I am asking our district administration and our locally-elected school board members to advocate for our seniors and do what is fair and right. If you feel it is not within the power, your power, to make this decision, but want to show support for our seniors, please join us. In front of the high school at noon on Tuesday, May 19th. A large group will be gathering to express our frustration for these arbitrary rules. And our support for the graduating class of 2020. Sincerely, Taryn Thompson, Lakeland Class of 97 graduate. Mother of two LHS students and a small business owner. And that is all for patron comment.
Rob, you're still on mute. Sorry. Okay, thank you for the patron input. Um, we'll go on to the discussion items. Um, at this point, it's information only. Lakeland High School and Timberlake High School 2020 graduation ceremonies. So. I suppose we ought to talk about, uh. I guess that's why we're here. I'm not sure exactly what, uh, we need to do at this point, but I do know that, um. Couple of principals, uh, I believe from Timberlake and from Lakeland, uh, Senior High School. Met today with Panhandle Health and with the, uh, um, sheriff and. Probably the superintendent at the fairgrounds today. And so, um, I think it would be, it would be good to hear from them about what came about from that, uh, meeting. Because this is certainly weighing on, on, you know, everybody's minds in the community about the graduation. And, and generally, the disruption in all of the students, you know, K through 12. Um, their school year, so I just want everyone to know from my personal. Position is, i- i- this isn't something that I take lightly and the, the discussions we've had in the past. Few, uh, board meetings, um, I don't make the decisions lightly. I'm trying to, I'm trying to. Um, walk the, the tightrope of, you know, following the rules and being supportive. And trying to figure out, you know. What's appropriate, because we still have to, you know, be in a good example for our kids and, and our community. So, this is not an easy, this is not an easy, uh, uh, topic of discussion. But I'm, I'm glad that we're together here right now and that we can, we can. Talk a little bit more about it, maybe come to some, some alternate decision. So Chrissy, if we have. You know, superintendent or one of the principals, maybe they can enlighten us on the meeting that they had today?
Thank you, Trustee Irons, I, um, this is the superintendent. I, uh, Mr. Everland and Mr. Derek have been attending all the meetings at the fairgrounds. And that meeting noted, it was both of their plans that they put in. So I think it'd be most appropriate, uh, I can see Mr. Derek is up on the video, so if he could address the board, I think that would be most appropriate.
That would be great.
Well, I appreciate it and I appreciate the Board of Trustees getting together again to address this issue. It's, it is complicated, as you said, Rob. And, and certainly, uh, you know, I, I understand, you know, the frustrations are, that are out there. And there, there, there really truly is, there are no villains, you know, in, in this argument. From the standpoint, everybody's trying to do their very, very best. And, and I certainly want to communicate that to, to you as our Board of Trustees. That I certainly understand that. And I know you guys have to make some difficult decisions. But, uh, but, but please understand, we are, uh, we know it's difficult. And there's a lot of facets to this. And, and like you, Rob, had mentioned that, uh, uh, Trustee Irons, that. You know, y- you weigh this very, very heavily and, and we, we see that and we understand that completely. And I want to state that upfront. Um, so at the, at the board meeting today, or at the, uh, fairgrounds meeting today, you know, we met with. Uh, you know, there was administration from every, uh, high school. Uh, from Post Falls High School, Portaleane High School, Lake City High School, Portaleane Charter, Timberlake High School, Lakeland High School. Um, you know, present, along with Sheriff Ben Wolfinger. There was Laura Whalen for the Panhandle Health Department. There was the Alexia from the, uh, the, the manager of the Cootie County Fairgrounds. There was the event coordinators, uh, uh, that are doing all of the, uh, you know, uh, audio visual. Uh, for the particular graduations that are being held at the fairgrounds. I mean, it is a significant amount of people that have come together to try and, uh, put together this event. At a, at a rate, i- i- at a cost that's, that's greatly reduced from what anybody would charge, you know, normally. And, uh, and that's one thing Alexia mentioned. She said that, you know, she's been a part, obviously, of concerts. And these people that are putting together this graduation for the schools is, is much, much less. In light of that, you know, obviously, the frustration is, a- and I shouldn't say the frustration. The request from our district, uh, to the, uh, to the, uh. Individuals that were at, that, that were attending the meeting was that, uh, we would like to have the ability to have our students. Sit together during the graduation ceremony. I mean, that's been, actually, it's been our request from the get-go. That's what we've asked, if, if we could do that. And, and as you know, uh, the local health department, Laura Whalen, uh, she's denied that. In light of the fact that as she interprets the governor's orders, that this would be, this would not be in compliance with, with those orders. And I know the frustration that you just heard from the parents, the patrons, as they responded. Is when you call the governor, and I've called them as well, and in fact, I submitted the letter which I shared with you last week. To the governor, uh, requesting, you know, that our students be able to sit together. You know, their response is, it's ultimately a school board decision. And so, they say it's your decision and then, obviously, but you've been, um, asked to, uh, comply with the State Board of Education. State Board of Education says, follow your local health district's, uh, recommendations. The local health district says, we're following the governor's recommendation. So we have this intre- interesting loop. That we're kind of caught in and, uh, we all feel like we're in the middle of it. So, I, I recognize the frustration. I even recognize the frustration to the point of parents saying, boy, we need to demonstrate. And we need to show our frustration. And, and this is America and that's what makes it great. And we love it. And that's why we live here. Um, but when I brought up to the, uh. The members of the committee today and the, all the, all the, uh, different agencies that were represented today in the meeting. I said, this, this is our desire. In fact, I said, our school board's gonna have a special meeting today. And I said, this is one of the things that they're re- they're wrestling with, because, uh, you know, they want to make a, a good decision. So I said, is there any chance that we could have our graduates from all of our schools, but at least those schools that are requesting it. In chairs, in between the stage and the cars, um, for this event. And Laura Whalen came to the middle, uh, it was, we were all standing in a circle, came to the middle and said, you know, I just. As I interpret again, the governor's orders, that would not be in compliance with the governor's orders. And I said, well, i- and I, I just had mentioned about the Silverwood and the bars opening up in stage three as, as opposed to stage four. And, uh, she says, yeah, but this is not articulated in the governor's orders. And so, from my communication with the state, uh, we would be in violation if we did that. Ben Wolfinger, the, the Cootie County Sheriff was there and he, uh, um, chimed in right after Laura. And said, yes, and this is on county property, so we will be in compliance with Cootie Health. Uh, or the Panhandle Health District's recommendations. And so it was very clear that the only way that, uh, you know, that would change. Would be if the governor made a special statement saying that graduations, you know, would. It would be acceptable for students to, uh, be able to sit with their class with social distancing guidelines and et cetera, et cetera. Um, and whether that's gonna happen or not, I don't know. I mean, obviously, we don't know. And, uh, like I said, I, I've written a letter to the governor. I know there's different people have called the hotline. Um, it seems to make sense. And even people there don't necessarily disagree with that, that it makes sense. But, you know, you have also the other side of the coin with, with what's gonna happen with the health proposal. So, from the standpoint of the Cootie County Fairgrounds, they're, um, you know, you asked me what was the, the, the nature of the meeting. They said at this point, they would not violate the governor's orders as interpreted by Panhandle Health District. So, uh, i- it would not be something that, where they would allow, um, uh, us to have students in chairs. At that venue. So I, I guess I'll leave it there with that, uh, uh, from, for information's sake.
Uh, thank you.
And Trustee Irons, if I could interrupt. Principal Everland from Timberlake High School is in and out of service today visiting seniors. But he did send a quick email to us, if you'd like me to read that.
I actually would.
It just says, after today's meeting at the Cootie County Fairgrounds, it is clear from Sheriff Wolfinger. That he will cite anyone who knowingly violates the governor's stage one through four guidelines. I believe the original graduation plan is best considering this updated information.
All right, thank you. Do we have any, um, any other board members, um, would, would any other board members like to speak to this?
Uh, Rob, I would.
Great, go ahead, Michelle.
Sure, um. I, when we, when I started receiving emails on Friday from very concerned parents, I was rather distressed. Um, specifically with regard to some of the allegations in there, such as we weren't given all the information. Um, and it lies on us to make the decision, not the Panhandle Health District. So for clarification, I decided to put myself in the parents' shoes and I did what they did. I called the governor's office as if I were a parent of Lakeland, um, or any school district. I don't believe I named our school district. But I just asked who I would speak to about, you know, my school holding a graduation ceremony. I was, had a lovely chat with the gal that answered the phone, who deferred me to the State Board of Education. I then spoke to the State Board of Education with my same quest and had a lovely conversation with that gal. Who then deferred me to either the US Department of Education or my local school district. Or, excuse me, my local health district, Panhandle Health District. Then I did not call the US, uh, Department of Education. I actually looked on their website, to which they do not address graduation ceremonies at all. They simply address what you need to do to open school again. I then called Panhandle Health District and I was shuttled into the COVID-19 crisis hotline. Um, I asked for Laura Whalen. I was given to a gentleman that I'll call Bob. I don't recall his name. I wrote it down. I don't have that paper, because I'm at my office. Um, Bob stayed it, uh, he listened to my plight. I said, you know, I, I want my, my child to graduate. What do I need to do about that? Who do I need to talk to? Bob was very passionate about my plight. He listened to what I said. He thought I had great ideas. And that we, as a school district, should be entitled to decide how we move this forward. Again, I asked for Laura Whalen, you know, shouldn't I be talking to her? And he put me on hold. Then he came back and he said, you know, it sounds like your plans have considered everything. I think you should move forward with this. This is a great idea. Well, then, finally, about the fourth time that I said, you know, my superintendent's talking to someone named Laura Whalen. And I just, I don't understand why my superintendent would tell me this, if you were telling me it's okay. Well, he then got off, put me on hold again, spoke with his supervisor, came back on with a different countenance. And said, he just found out that Laura Whalen was his boss and that if she has given direction, he can't override that. So I share this because I respect the frustration of the parents getting the circular runaround dog chasing its tail. To getting resolution. Everybody is passing it off to a different agency. And with respect to the fact that we are, we are making a lifelong decision. Because these kids will not graduate from either Lakeland or Timberlake High. Again, it's a one and done. We don't get a redo and we can't do it again. We're basing it off of her interpretation. And I struggle with that, because as I read the governor's order. Um, all he's requesting, or actually, all he is ordering governmental agencies. And businesses to do is that they must adhere to the mandatory portions of social distancing and sanitation requirements. Now, given that I personally haven't spoken to Ben Wolfinger. I've been told that he's been advocating for the reopening of businesses. Given that the city parks are completely open with children climbing all over place structures with no social distancing in effect. I'm very bothered that. There, I, I, that our hands are tied, so to speak. Um, I am disappointed that no one considered the graduations being held locally at either high school. Um, I think that was maybe, uh, a grievous error. Because I know we are now, um, tied into the fairgrounds. We, we've committed via contract and so we're gonna have to pay whether we do it there or not. And given our financial predicaments for now and in the future, I don't think it's, uh, best practice. To just, you know, pay the fairgrounds but not do the ceremony there. I really believe that if we're not advocating for these children. These graduating seniors, to the best of our ability, we are not doing our job. That's why I put myself in the shoes of the parents. That's why I made all the calls that I did. And I just, I think this is absolutely ridiculous that everyone's being told it's on our shoulders. And now, we've got someone who's interpreting what the governor wrote, uh, to mean one thing. And I, I just, I don't agree with us not adhering to what the order says. Which is simply to maintain social distancing and sanitation requirements. That's all that's in the order. There are other suggestions. They are not rules. They are not mandated orders. They're suggestions. And I just think we're doing these kids a huge disservice by not allowing them to graduate as a class. I'm not advocating for the whole cap-throwing and the hugging and all that. I'm just saying, I don't think that it is a huge violation for children. For the seniors, I shouldn't call them children, but for them to be sitting six feet apart, wearing masks. Doing the social practice that you can't even find at the local grocery store or now at any restaurant. I, I, I drove by Westwood on Saturday and it was packed with people overflowing. And that's okay, but our kids can't sit six feet apart, donning masks if so needed. I, I, I just, I don't understand the logic here. On top of the fact that, switching gears, like I do. Um, from a business perspective, if parents are willing to sign an indemnity agreement. And a liability statement saying that the district is not held liable for anything with respect to this. Why can't we give these students that have fought 12 and 13 years, long and hard. To reach this point? And now we're just saying, ooh, but somebody's interpreting it one way and that's okay with us. I, I don't agree with that. I think they have worked way too hard to just be dismissed. Because all we presented was the fairgrounds and that's where it's at. I, I just, I, I'm really struggling with this. And that's. These parents, our constituents deserve more from us than just accepting it, saying it's okay.
I totally agree with you, Michelle. Everything that you've said, I, you're exactly right. I'm in complete agreement. And, and I wonder if there are other options. I mean, I'd like to maybe have a discussion of what the other options might be. Because this is a once-in-a-lifetime for some youngsters. I mean, this will be the only graduation they ever have. And when I go stand in a line to get in a store and I'm closer to somebody than these, than these people would be, it really, i- i- it. It doesn't make any sense and it's not right. So I'd like to maybe see if, if what the options are. Are there other options? Are there other ways that this could be done, possibly on private property? Are there, like, what, what could we do? Like, we've been talking about what we can't do, but what can we do? How can we make this right? How can we accomplish something that would be a good fit? And that would give them what they so deserve, these seniors? How could we accomplish that?
I agree.
Well. Looks like it's you and me, problem solving. Let's see if we, what we can come to here. Let's see. Um, I, I, I do agree with you with the fairgrounds. And I don't know, maybe there could be a party at the fairgrounds.
And that there was a committee with the principals, superintendents, uh, this entire area. They did come together, um, long before this and did try to brainstorm all of the different options. That were, uh, they thought were available to us at the time, following the guidelines from the, uh, Panhandle Health. So, I, I don't know if Trent, uh, could speak to that or not. I, I was not privy to any of those meetings. But there was a large group of people that were discussing this at length, discussing all of the different options. And what could fit within the, the guidelines set for, so.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all right, so that's kind of already.
I hear what that said, but the guidelines have changed. I mean, and, and that's this whole, I guess that's my biggest, one of my, my bigger struggles is this is an evolving situation. Because the governor, who enacted his reopening plan, just revised it again. So it went in on the 16th, uh, which was after our last board meeting. And so that's where I'm, I'm really struggling with this evolving plan that we're just saying, nope, this is the way it is. Laura Whalen's interpreting, uh, the governor's order, which is, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six paragraphs. It's long, but those long pages cover suggestions. The actual order is five paragraphs or six paragraphs. I, I, I just don't, I don't think that's the best we can offer these kids that have promoted Lakeland, that have stood by Lakeland, that have represented Lakeland at various meets, uh, state thingies, state championships, you know. These kids fought hard and they represented our district with pride. And we're just going to say this is okay. I, I don't agree with that.
Yes, absolutely.
No, and I, I, I would agree with you, you know, that, uh, that they deserve to have a graduation. I would defend that, um, the fairgrounds was an excellent option given the restrictions at the time that they, that, you know, all the school districts in the area came together. And again, I'm not privy to it, but it may, it makes sense to me that they have to make plans that are the best viable option at the time. Now, this is an evolving, an unprecedented, um, uh, time that we're going through. And what is happening right now will probably change in two days and it will change again in seven days. And it's absolutely impossible to predict where we'll be by June 6th. It, it's just a, a very, very difficult to anticipate. So, yeah, we're in a contract, I guess, with the, um, with the fairgrounds. And because they're not willing to allow us to sit together, you know.
Um, Rob, it's, it's my understanding though that if it is allowed, uh, we will have up to 50 students seated, uh, socially distanced, is up to 50 students if we're in that phase and, and no outbreak happens, that they will allow that. Uh, it was started at 10, we may be up to 50, was my understanding, I could be wrong. Um, but that was my understanding. And I just need it to be known too that, um, I feel for parents, I'm a parent. I've tried to put myself in parents' position about, uh, how I would feel. I also have to look at the fact that I work in healthcare. I see patients that are alone right now, they cannot see their families, they have no one. These people are dying with no family around them. I am not going to advocate for something that could possibly cause somebody to get something, take it home and kill somebody. I couldn't live with myself if that happened. And so I think we're doing the best we can trying to give them at least a graduation. They can walk across the stage, they can get their diploma, they can shake their principal's hand, they can have pictures taken. So I, it's way better than a lot of the other options of the virtual graduation. NIC is not having an actual graduation, theirs is a virtual graduation. They're missing out on that opportunity of grabbing their diploma, shaking the hand of the administrator and getting their picture taken. And to me, that's what the graduation is about. They can have their parties afterwards with their friends and their families and get together and however that want, they want to look for that. But as far as following the guidelines, I'm going to follow what the State Board has put down, what the Panhandle Health has said and again, what Sheriff Wolfinger has said because I am not going to cause somebody to get fined and it can be, it's a misdemeanor charge with up to a thousand dollar fine. I can't pay that, I'm not going to have anybody else have to pay that because we want to do something that just right now simply isn't allowed. And I guarantee that everybody out there has changed their life in the last two months to accommodate, whether you believe in the rules or not, we've all made accommodations for this. We have changed how we work, we have changed how we go out to eat, we have changed how we shop, we have changed the, how we do our hair because it's not getting done, we just started that. Everybody's life has changed, we, we are an adaptable being, we are adapting, we are overcoming this. And I think we're teaching these kids a valuable lesson that no matter what life throws at you, you adapt, you change, you modify, but you still overcome and I'm going to stick by that.
Thank you, Renee.
Well, okay, I guess I just, part of this order that was just enacted on the 16th clearly states that large venues are required to remain closed. Yet, here we go, having a graduation at a large venue. I, I don't understand how that is appropriate, yet, you know, Laura Whalen, based on her interpretation, the large venue is exempt somehow because it's okay now, but.
It's not really a large venue because Lakeland is only 200 and we'd only allow 50 students out at a time. Timberlake is, I think, 140 and only 50 students would be allowed out at a time. The large venue is having 250 people together.
No, a large venue is the Kootenay County Fairground. What constitutes a large venue is a place that is a movie theater, concert venue, sporting events, public pools, et cetera. I think the fairgrounds constitutes a large venue.
And so, the order that came out on the 16th, was it?
Yes.
What was it about?
Well, it states that the following businesses within the state of Idaho are required to remain closed except to perform minimum basic operations as defined in Section 6. And that includes bars and nightclubs and large venues. To me, the fairgrounds is a large venue. Yet Laura Whalen can approve us to go ahead and hold graduation ceremonies, one right after the other at this large venue and claim that we're not in violation. However, we can't sit our class together at socially distanced, following social practices, socially distancing practices, sanitation rules, whatever it is. I just, I think there, I think that, I mean, that just really, that upsets me. Because I, I, you know, I hear what we're saying and I'm not saying don't follow the rules. But what I'm saying is, don't manipulate the rules to support whatever it is that you think the interpretation is.
So, basically what you're saying is, that's a, uh, she's contradicting herself.
Exactly.
And it's, it's frustrating.
It's very frustrating.
Yeah.
Chairman, or Vice Chairman Irons, may I speak to that? Uh, just because I do talk to her weekly and instead of putting her on the spot and, um, I really feel it's important to note that she really wants and she's been an advocate for trying to get schools even reopened. She approved our, our school visitation plan. She wants her to be, people to be, have the ability to do this. But she actually talked to the governor's office, to the health advisor and every time I've spoke to her, she is directly speaking to somebody. She's not making this decision unilaterally. She, what she has told me is that she is based, in her decision, based on talking directly to the governor's office and their health advisor, that that's what they're required to do. So I just don't feel like in a public meeting that she should be, her reputation should be tarnished for that she's making this decision unilaterally because she is not. And she's been very, um, good to work with and I don't think it's just her personal opinion. So I think that you should speak on the minute.
Because we don't know.
Excuse me, I think that's an important point, but we just keep going round and round. You know, p- parents want to be able to figure out how to get to the bottom of this and who they can discuss this with and who is actually a decision maker. And it, it just keeps going round and round. And I think that that is, um, the, one of the main reasons I thought this meeting was important because if it's on our shoulders, I think my, my opinion and, and Michelle's and, and, you know, Renee's and other people's opinion has been made known and how, where we stand on this. And that, hey, if, if there's something we can do to, um, get these graduation, these kids graduated in a safe way, we, we want to make it happen. And so it's, it's refreshing to hear that she's working with us and, and trying to, to make sure that, um, we can give these kids the best we can. I, I just think it just keeps going back to the round and round and round and, and who, who ultimately makes this decision. So, anyway, thank you for my two cents there.
I have some input. Obviously, you know, one side's being told one thing and another side's being told another thing. But here's the bottom line is unless we have the ability to move this graduation from the fairgrounds, we cannot expect that all of the students will be allowed to follow, uh, this social distancing recommendation because, um, it sounds like Sheriff Wolfinger and others have made it very clear that people will be cited, arrested, what have you, and that they expect to enforce not a law, but a recommendation. So unless we can move them somewhere else in such a short period of time and have everybody that's behind the scenes work that out, that's really the question, is there another place to hold them? Do we have the staff, the capability? Obviously, we would be out, the district would be out, the, uh, 20 some hundred dollars that it was. Um, and, excuse me, uh, we would have to move forward in that manner. And I think I brought that up last time at the last meeting, asking if we had a Plan B, if this actual situation arose and nobody had went there. So, um, there was no plan other than the fairground. And I don't, I don't see how there can be any other plan other than the fairground when we only have, um, a couple of weeks, if it's even, is, do we have two weeks?
I think, um, we probably do, but, um, actually, um, I think, uh, uh, Trent, Principal Derek would, would like to speak again. He may have some, something that, uh, would be valuable for us to hear. Uh, Ramona, would you mind if I, uh, if I asked him to speak again to us?
No, no, yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to say, that's what I'm hearing is that if we stick, you know, being at the fairgrounds, that decision's sort of set in stone and Wolfinger's already made it clear that he has no problem arresting or citing people, so.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of hear, I hear what you're saying and, and I, I agree as well with that right now. Um, why don't we go ahead and hear from, uh, from Trent Derrick?
All right, no, thank you. I, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, you know, moving forward. One of was the question was, had we considered, um, for example, our own, uh, facilities earlier? And, and that, we, we definitely did, uh, you know, looking at it. But again, as we, we were considering those facilities and the, the, the restrictions that were in place, there was just no certainty that we could, uh, move forward with, with planning a date and time for those facilities. The, the, what was appealing to the fairgrounds for our district as well as other districts at that time is it was a, it was a plan, a protocol that was put together and had the approval of the health department and the governor's office so that we had some certainty of, as to when we could have graduation and the time of it. So, so that was, that was the one option that was put out there. Again, when we put together our, uh, survey that for Lakeland High School, we also had the other option of June 17th, which was our Plan B and holding it at real life. So that was in Phase 4, you know, we would be in that, that particular phase and, uh, you know, having our graduates in the building and then having parents, you know, inside that building as well. But again, even in light of that, the, the health department had, uh, said to us, I mean, what would that look like? You know, inside a building, again, uh, how many students or how many, uh, guests could each student bring? It was uncertain, uh, the fact that it was inside, there was a lot of uncertainty to it at that point. And so when our parents, uh, can, took that survey, um, you know, like I, I think I mentioned it to you guys in the last meeting or to the Board of Trustees in the last meeting, it was 53% of the people said, you know, we're, we, we would, uh, choose the fairgrounds over the Plan B, which was real life on June 17th. And then there was 13 or 14% that said they had no strong feeling either way. And as a result of that, you know, that's kind of where we went, at least I went at that point and said, okay, well, let's, let's move forward with the proposal to the board of utilizing the fairground because, um, at least there was some certainty. It was something we could put our stamp on and say, we know that this is something that we can go to at this particular time. Granted, we had hoped that perhaps, uh, as we moved closer to the date or maybe even by now, there would be some movement by the health officials and the governor's office to say, hey, let's go ahead and allow our students to at least sit together in the fairgrounds so they could, uh, enjoy it as a class. Now, up to this point, that hasn't occurred. And so, uh, as far as the approval by either the governor's office or the health department to allow us to do that. And I think, and I, I get it, I, I mean, the, the, there's, there is that frustration, no doubt about it. But the other thing, I just want to make note, I, I want you to know that I've also received emails. I received emails from the LEA, uh, uh, President Jason Bradbury. I've received emails from other parents that have said, uh, you know, they're fully supportive of the decision to be at the fairgrounds and they just want to make sure that we do what's in the best interest of the district and to follow the health, um, the health district guidelines. So I, I just want to make sure that you hear that because I, I know, and I don't begrudge it at all. I know we have parents that are frustrated and they say, and be honest with you, I'm probably one of them. I would love to have our graduates seated, uh, seated together at the fairgrounds as a class. But I also know, everybody's doing the best that they can. And the one thing that the fairgrounds can provide for us that if we go to a Plan B would be very, very difficult is the, it would be livestreamed. From what I understand, this is a professional, these are professional event planners. I mean, they do this for a living. As far as all the audio and the livestreaming, they're going to record it. They're going to have big screens so that people can, you know, hopefully see everything. I mean, that's my understanding, I'm, I'm not there, so I can't picture exactly. They told us today that these screens would be 25 feet up in the air. They have the stage, uh, all of that would be done. There'd be a lot of, uh, really controlled with the parking. So there's certain things that the fairgrounds offer us that certainly I, I, uh, I just want to note, I mean, they, they really want to provide something that's a really special event for graduates. I mean, they really do. You know, there's frustration, um, you know, I, I mentioned, you know, in light of the meeting, at one point I even said, you know, it'd certainly be easier if we just had all the graduates sitting, seated in the front from all the other logistics that we're doing. But, but obviously there's these requirements and, but I do want the, I, I do want you as a board to understand. I, I have also had patrons, uh, parents contact me and say, please, just follow the health guidelines. And, and so, um, that doesn't help, it makes it more convoluted and more difficult for all of us. But, but they're, like in everything, there's two sides to the coin. I, I'm just going to state this, my recommendation to the board as a principal, and I've thought a lot about it, I've read a lot of emails, I've talked to a lot of different people, a lot of different parents, and, uh, I, uh, I appreciate all of our parents and all the input they give us, I really do. Uh, uh, they're, they're incredible, I appreciate our, our students, they're, they're awesome. My recommendation is we stick with the fairgrounds and continue to lobby to the governor to allow us to have our students sit together. I think that's what it's going to take. If the governor says this is what we can do, that, nobody at the fairgrounds is going to deny that. Ben Wolfinger is not going to, uh, you know, obviously dispute that. I mean, we're ready to go. Uh, and like you said, uh, Trusty Irons, things have changed a lot in, you know, three, four days. You know, in two weeks, you know, things could change a lot again. But I, but I know one thing that many of our parents, not all of our parents, many of our parents are happy that we've made a decision and we know when the graduation date is and where it's at and we can count on it and we can move forward with that. And, um, And we can count on it and we can move forward with that. And, um, you know, there isn't anybody that wants our class to sit together, well, any, any more than I do, uh, maybe as much as I do, but, but I really would love for that to happen. But I, but I understand, this is life, you know? We can protest and, and I, and I, I, I not only recognize that as a viable force of action. I, I, I think I applaud that. But at the end of the day, people like yourselves have to make these hard decisions and law enforcement has to make hard decisions. And, uh, school districts have to make hard decisions and we have to live with that, whatever that may be. And if you, uh, you know, want to go a different course of direction, you know, I, I'm obviously, I, I serve at the pleasure of you as the board and I'll do whatever you want and I'll, I'll go at it wholeheartedly, full heart, uh, you know, with full steam ahead. But I just wanted to share my recommendation based on, uh, what I've been hearing from the entirety of the group. And, and I, and I think it's important that, uh, that you hear that as well.
Trent, I do have one question for you. Um, as far as the, uh, the fairground event, you had mentioned something about a live feed. Is that something that they would or could broad, you know, broadcast on, on, on the internet so that family members across the entire nation could enjoy the graduation ceremony of some of their family members?
Yeah, and that, that's exactly what they're doing. So they're working with our tech department. There's been a little bit of communication back and forth with our tech department, up to date anyway. And we would put it on our website, on Facebook pages. And so people would just click on that wherever they're at in the world, as long as they have internet access and, and they could watch that. And it's also going to be recorded. I found that out today too. I didn't know it was going to be recorded, but they said they were going to record it as well. So logistically, there's a lot of things that, you know, these event planners can provide. That would be difficult for us to, to do. I'm not saying that would be impossible, but I don't think we could do all of it, obviously. So there's positives and negatives with whatever we do. And, and I just want you to know as, as the board from my, from where I sit and the, the communication that's come to me, uh, there's also a number of parents that, that are thankful that we have a, we have a venue, we have a date, we have some certainty, we have a graduation. And, um, you know, I, 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 I want you to, I want to communicate that clearly to you as well as the fact that there's no doubt. I would love being a parent as well. I would love for this class to, uh, be able to sit together and share this experience. But it is unique times and, um, we're doing everything we can. And I, I know you guys are, I know our parents are. I, I know our law enforcement, they're doing everything we can. I know our health departments, they're doing everything they can. Everybody's trying to do the best they can. I, I firmly believe that. Uh, but at the end of the day, it's your decision as a board, I guess, to determine what we're going to do. But, uh, I just wanted to say, thank you.
Appreciate it. Do we have any more input? Uh, I'm sure we probably do. Any other, uh, trustees like to say something about this discussion? It's my opinion, um, that I, I personally think that the, the fairgrounds, given the situation that we were in when we made the plans and even right now in the current situation, that it is a pretty good alternative. I like the idea that, um, I mean, it's not a good situation anyway you slice it, but there are some positives. I mean, having a professionally live streamed event that's recorded that families, family members across the entire world can, can see, that's got to be a benefit. And, you know, maybe we focus on the positive things because I, I want the kids to be able to sit together and they still may be able to sit together, but I'm not willing to, to A, jump ship and then not potentially be able to have the graduation come together and be the best that it can be. You know, given the timeframe and the changing rules. And I'm also, I'm, I'm on the fence about the whole. I don't want to be, I don't want to set the example that if we're specifically told that we can't do this, and if we do, that we will be cited, then I'm not in support of, of okaying that. I am in support of bombarding the governor's office until we get a special concession, which I don't understand why we can't have a special concession for two hundred kids to sit six feet apart with, you know, face coverings. But we don't have that right now. So that's my two cents that I think the fairgrounds offers up some unique opportunities for families around the world to be able to enjoy this and celebrate this that they normally wouldn't. Um, and I think we're doing the best with the information that we've had, and I don't think that it's over yet. I, I feel like everybody's thinks that it's going to be, you know, a horrible graduation and that the kids won't be able to sit together. They may not be, but I don't think that it'll be a horrible graduation. And I still think that there's a potential that we'll be able to get the kids to be able to sit, you know, socially distanced. At least that's my hope, but I'm just not willing personally to, as I said, an example for my two daughters that are going to be juniors to basically break the law. And that's something I'm just not willing to do.
Rob, I absolutely respect what you're saying. I respect what, the input that's been provided. As someone that has been elected, I want my constituents to know that I am listening to their concerns. I took the time out of my day on Friday at work and I walked through their shoes. I don't like the allegations stating that I, we, as a board, weren't given all the information. Granted, you know, I realize these parents are writing on a motion because, you know, it's one and done. This is the only graduation their kid's going to get. So I want my constituents to know that, you know, I will go to bat for them. And that's what I'm doing here. I really respect following the law. I'm in the legal profession. I don't advocate for breaking it. But with respect to what this governor's orders is and respecting that Lauren Whelan is doing her job and as Becky pointed out, her due diligence. I, I don't, there's just, there's so much confusion here. We're holding it at a large venue. That's been said, you can't do that. But yet we're not letting kids sit together. So this is public record now. And I, I, I pray my constituents know that I'm going to go to bat for them. I want their kids to sit together. And I'm not advocating for everyone to run out and break the law, um, especially if the sheriff has stated, y'all are going to get cited if you do. It's, I mean, I think that's just silly to break the law if the governor or if the sheriff is basically going to cherry pick, you know, sit out there and wait for everyone to do their lawbreaking and then cite them. But I, I, I want the parents to know that we're here to do a job for them. And so that is why I asked for this meeting. Because I think it needs to get out there that we are really trying to advocate for these kids. And there are certain things we cannot change. But I'm still going to fight for these kids to sit together for graduation. So, that's my two cents.
I think we need a letter from the governor because here's the most frustrating thing for everybody involved. Is we are told one thing and we have to live by the law and what the law says, right? We, we can't do anything outside of that. We're public education. We are highly restricted more than our constituents. And when they come to us and say, you must, you must, you must, and then when the parent, the constituent calls and gets a totally different thing, we need something in writing. We need the governor or Mr. Jefferson, whoever, to make a decision in writing and be done with it because I, I think that's what's creating more frustration. I, is that we are being told one thing that we have to stick by. And, and then the parents and their frustration, you know, they're calling and they're saying, oh, no, the, the board can do whatever they want to do, which we know is not true. We, we know that's not true. You know, because we've already been down that road. And, and I'm with you. I'm with you, Michelle. You know, I'm, I every, I don't know anybody here that isn't with you. And I don't know anybody here that hasn't, you know, thought about the kids, tried to do the best you could for the students, worked early on the issue. All those things, I think it comes down to, I would ask that everybody contact the governor's office email, phone, whatever. We need it in writing. What is his final decision? That's what we need. You know, I mean, that's at least he can give these kids, right, is to answer them. Right? And that's who it's ultimately about. It's not even about us. It's not our graduation. It's them and their future and going forward. I, I mean, I just think that's the least he can do. We do it every, every time we take a vote, we're answering for the, for the students. You know, and, and I think he owes them that. So.
I agree with you. Yeah, that would be great to have that letter from him that stating his position on things so that the buck stops there.
Yep.
And, uh, I will reach out to him on behalf of the board. And, um, I will at least get in touch with his education advisor and tell him that we are asking for a written letter from the governor. And, um, if he could write in, that would be great. So I will reach out to them tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Meyer.
Yes, thank you. But I also believe that there's power in numbers. So I think if we each independently did a letter um, to the governor, I think that will at least show our constituents that the buck isn't just stopping here. Saying, listen to us, listen to us, listen to us. If you want change, you have to be willing to effectuate for it. So I, I, we have to affect the change.
I will commit to doing that. I will get that letter written tonight and get it off in the morning.
And I as well will commit to that, uh, writing to the governor and expressing concern. And, um, I'm an optimist. I still hold out hope that by the time June sixth rolls around, that we'll have a, uh, an opportunity to have the kids at least sit socially distanced apart. And I would advocate and ask for that as well. But I definitely will draft a letter and get that sent off myself. And I think that, um, Ramona, you, you hit nail on the head when you said, you know, the, yeah, we as a school board have the right to make decisions, but we have to make decisions within the rules and scope of the law. And, um, that's, that's the difficult because everything is, there's so much gray right now. There's just no black and white. And, and that's the, the difficulty that, that we face. But we have to, we have to remember, you know, we can make, uh, decisions, but we are, we represent, you know, our constituents, but we are also part of the public school system and we are held to different standards than a private business. So, um, but those are good points and I appreciate that input. So, um, we have any more discussion on this topic?
I don't.
I would ask, I don't know necessarily. You know, we, we may take action to approve, deny, amend, modify, or postpone action on any of the items regarding the, the, the graduation ceremony for 2020. At this time, do any of the trustees have any motions that they would like to, uh, to make? For what it's worth, I think, um, we, I personally think we have, we have a, at least a solid plan in place for having a graduation. I think we need to pressure the governor's office to give us some clarification so that we can expand what we already know we will have. That's my opinion. So.
I hear what you're saying, Rob. I don't recall what the motion, um, that was, that was passed. If there was room for, uh, because I know we, we agreed with the plan that was presented, which was ten to fifty. I want to make sure that our parents know that the minute the door is open for the expansion of these kids to sit together, um, socially distanced with whatever practices need to be put in place, that they're good to go, that we're not going to say anything other than you're good to go. Um, because if our approval was solely for them to, for the up to fifty, my concern is, I wanted it two hundred. I, I, I know we're just below that with, with, uh, Lakeland and if, I don't know necessarily that Lakeland and Timberlake need to sit the field together, but I, I want to make sure that everyone out there knows when that door opens up, everyone can walk through it. That walk through it.
And I would ask, um, Chrissy, to, could, can you re-read the motion that we did pass? I think it was about, um, the guidelines, sticking to the guidelines. I don't think that it had anything specific about ten or fifty, but I would ask Chrissy if she could look that up because I can't really scroll through on it right now.
So our, our motion was pretty broad. It was an approved, denied Timberlake High School and Lakeland High School graduation ceremony for 2020 seniors at Cooney County Fairgrounds. It didn't, it didn't have a specific number in there.
Okay.
Okay. Presented their plans for graduation. So those were the attachments and then the board just approved those, but they did not, neither one of them had specific numbers in there.
Yeah, I think it was, um, it was just based on the recommendations at the time. And I do remember, one of the last things, um, at the last board meeting that I said, I, I'm pretty sure I went on record saying that, obviously, um, if we can have more kids, we'll seat more kids. I, I'm pretty sure that I said that at the last board meeting before we got out, that I wanted to go on record. Obviously letting the patrons know that, and the parents know that, you know, we want as many kids to sit together as possible. And if, if we're allowed to do that, we certainly will do that. So.
Well, the plan presented by Lakeland has fifty students at a time out of a car. I just, I don't want to have any hangups at all. And, um, Timberlake's was quite large. So. Yeah, it doesn't, Timberlake didn't specify with people.
I mean, I'm not not sure. I mean, do we make a motion that we seat as many people at the graduation ceremony as allowed by the, the, um, governor and the, you know, health district?
I don't think there's any harm in doing. I don't think there's any harm in doing so. I think if anything, it just makes it so we don't need to approve it later.
Chrissy, what are your thoughts on this as the clerk of the court? I mean, a clerk of the school board.
Um, I would agree with Debbie that it should probably be a pretty broad motion. Um, it's going to have to be based to them on a maximum amount that is allowable by the governor on that graduation date. I think that's a good idea to come up with a motion that would cover it. So you're not having to make another motion and another motion at other board meetings though. You could put forth that same motion that we did last time, which would be approved tonight, Timberlake High School, Lakeland High School graduation ceremony for 2020 seniors at Cooten County Fairgrounds, um, at the maximum capacity allowed by governor.
Michelle, what do you think?
Oh, I think that's great. I was just sort of jotting something down to try and, so I, I, yeah, because I, I think if we made a motion to approve and I, this is a suggestion, I'm not making the motion at the second, but a motion to approve the Lakeland High School and Timberlake High School's graduating class, to have the ability to sit the maximum amount allowable by governor's mandate. Or by governor's approval, um, may even be a better, because he may not mandate anything. So that way it's covered that the class can sit with the most that is allowed. Your mic's not on. Your mic's not on.
I was talking to myself anyway. How it would be worded, but basically just add to the motion that we passed for the graduating classes at the fairgrounds to allow for the maximum amount of students that the, uh, governor will approve. Because we may get approval from here.
Right, right.
So we just reiterate the motion that we passed and add that we, um, will seat as many seniors socially distant together as the governor will approve by that date. That way we're covered up until the date of the ceremony. Because as we know, things change.
Yes, they do.
It might be that one last letter that the governor's office says, all right, already, let's send a letter so that they don't get ticketed and 200 kids can sit together out in the middle of the field.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so how does that need to be worded when we make that motion? I'm the newbie here, obviously.
Basically, um, a, a trustee would move. Basically, you would move to approve the graduation ceremony of Lakeland, uh, Timberlake, let's see, or Lakeland High School and Timberlake High School, 2020 graduation ceremonies at the, uh, Cooten County Fairgrounds to, and then that's where we would add the addendum to seat the maximum amount of students socially distant that the governor will approve. You know.
Sure.
I, without writing it down, and I don't, I'm in my car, so this is, I'm good internet service. I can't really write it down and be very eloquent, but.
Sure. I have been writing as you're speaking. If you would like to hear what I have written and if anyone wants to move with that motion, they're free to do so. I have approved, denied to allow Timberlake High School and Lakeland High School graduation ceremonies for 2020 seniors at Cooten County Fairgrounds with maximum amount of students allowable while adhering to social distancing guidelines based on governor's approval.
And then can we add in there, um, something to the effect up to the graduation date? So the approval up to the ceremony date. That way, you know, as things change, you know.
So everyone understands they have hope up until June 6th, 2020.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay. That's a mouthful.
So essentially, it sounds good. Essentially what she's doing is we're moving to, we're not re, you know, we're not making a motion to re-approve the graduation in the venue. We're, we're making a motion to approve seating the maximum amount of students at the graduation as approved by the governor up to June 6th, 2020. Basically, that's what, what it is. So Chrissy, if you want to reread that, somebody can write it down and make a motion and.
So trustee Irons, I can reread that. And if you'd like to ask for a motion after I read it, somebody can just say so moved, so they're not writing in.
Okay, so let's do a read.
A, an action item that states approved, denied to allow Timberlake High School and Lakeland High School graduation ceremonies for 2020 seniors at Cooten County Fairgrounds with maximum amount of students allowable while adhering to social distancing guidelines based on governor's approval up until the date of June 6th, 2020.
I would like to.
Wait, hold on. Yeah, Chrissy. Um, Chrissy, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on my phone and it, it's just a different format than when I'm on my computer. Uh, to have the, uh, the maximum amount of seniors, uh, seated because the graduation class will have the maximum amount of seniors regardless if they're seated together or not. So I just want a clarification that the purpose of this is to ensure that they can all sit together for the ceremony process.
Got it? Okay. I'm changing my wording so that actually makes sense now. Okay, uh, approved, denied to allow Timberlake High School and Lakeland High School graduation ceremonies for 2020 seniors at Cooten County Fairgrounds with maximum amount of seniors seated as allowed while social, while adhering to social distancing guidelines based on governor's approval up until the date of June 6th, 2020.
I would like, yes.
Can you clarify who made that move first, please?
I'll go ahead and move to approve that as stated.
Do, uh, I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Yes, a second.
All right. Okay, having a motion in a second. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Okay, so do we have anything else that we need to discuss? Chrissy, do I need to do anything else?
Gavel us out.
I'm sorry, it gets me, uh, it takes a bit to get to the mute button. Um, nothing else on the agenda, just to gavel us out.
All right then, um, the meeting is adjourned. I will gavel us out. Thank you all for attending and taking the time out of your day.
Yes, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.